So, Martin, I saw him party a couple of minutes ago.
Okay.
Uh, Olivia, this could be right.
Okay, I got 5:00. Phone. Boom.
Well, you can have it. I have my iPad because it's my work. Okay, thank you. Sorry to not mess around.
The problem is, that's it? Well, I'm gonna trust my, I'm gonna work on it.
Oh, it's Martin. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. That was close. All right.
You're on bottom round cap today.
Hey, pretty good.
Hey.
Hey, how are you?
Pretty good, Martin. Okay, we're missing a tram.
I'll get a tram.
Okay, I got 5:01. You okay?
Better than being on my bed.
That would be not a good way to.
I've done that before. Have you, Jerry Lynn, have you heard from the phone?
Yep. Soon as you're ready. Take two.
I'm not gonna get up to here.
All right. Well, good evening and welcome to the May 29th Special City Council Meeting for the City of Federal Way. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and get started here. So, we've got a study session for the 2019-20 Bionium Budget. This is a workshop. First, we will have a budget process and authority for council roles and responsibilities by Ade Awuruulu. Then, we'll talk about revenue options, again, led by Ade. Then, we'll have citizen comment and then council discussions and questions. Ade, why don't you start us off?
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, and the council. The first part of my presentation this evening is to go over the budget's responsibility and how that flows through the system. One of the good thing in the state of Washington is our steps are prescribed by the state. It's now really up to me. It's actually prescribed by the state, step by step, what we do. And I will also try to show you a little bit how this may relate to the zero-based budgeting and all of that. So, with that said, we'll get started. There are so few RCW that speak specifically to the order and the process of the budget. 35, and I have provided all of you a copy of this, which is a copy of the RCW. So, my PowerPoint is pretty much just trying to summarize this, and I hope most of you have had a chance to read through this, but I'll be referencing going back and forth. But this, the RCW, gives you the total detail of my PowerPoint. RCW 35A-11, that is laws governing the non-charter code cities and charter code cities and the powers. 35A-12, that is for the form of mayor council plan of government, which in this case, that pertain to us. That is a mayor and council form of government. 35A-13, that is a council mayor plan of government, again, and 35... 35A-33, that is the budget in the code city. And 35A-34 speaks specifically to the Bionium budgeting, which, again, is part of what we do. 35A-1120, the power vested in the legislative bodies. Legislative body of each code city shall have power to organize and regulate its internal affairs within the provisions of this title and its chapter. For the mayor council form of government, the mayor shall be the chief executive and administrative officer of the city, in charge of all departments and employees, with authority to designate assistants and department heads. He or she shall prepare and submit to the council a proposed budget as required by Chapter 35A-33. So, it is the responsibility of the mayor to prepare or to have his designate to prepare the budget, but it is still his budget to present to the council. The council of any code city organized under the mayor council plan of government provided in this chapter shall have the powers and authority granted to the legislative bodies of which governed by this title as more particularly described in Chapter 35A-11. So, this is part of the presentation. All estimates of receipts and expenditures for the ensuring year, that is, for the coming year, the year that we will be budgeting on, shall be fully detailed in the annual budget and shall be classified and segregated according to a standard classification of accounts to be adopted and prescribed by the state auditor after consultation with the BFFA, AWC, and Association of Four-Cent City Managers. So, not only is the RCW giving us guidelines, now they're saying, well, prescribed by the state auditor's office. We have the BAAS manual, which, for somebody like me, is our bible that we go by. That is pretty much where the accounts are detailed, what kind of account numbers we can use. To a great extent, the state legislators did this several years ago so that they can compare the spending of one city to the other, and they can actually have an aggregate report on all of the cities within the state. So, this authority was given to the state auditor's office, and at the end of each year, we download our detailed information into the state auditor's office. And because we all use the same account, it's easier for them to summarize and be able to report to the state legislator. So, honor, before October 2018, that is when, actually, the chief executive officer, which is the mayor, will present to the council by October 1st. The finance director shall submit to the chief administrative officer, which in this case is the mayor, the proposed preliminary budget, which is for the next-year budget. It will be in a tabular form, showing revenue and expenditure by department by fund, you know, comparative actual receipts for the last completed fiscal year. So, that means when we are putting together 2019, I'm supposed to provide the actual of 2017, so that you see what we actually spend in one year. And again, estimated receipt for current fiscal year, then give you the budget or the estimate for the current year, 2018. Then, estimate receipt for the ensuring fiscal year. I must also provide you the budget estimate for the following year. So, you are looking at pretty much a three-year information, actual of 2017, budget of 2018, and the proposal for 2019. So, this should be done by department within each fund actual from the last compiled fiscal year. So, in this particular case, especially for general fund, where we have a lot of departments, so we need to present to you by departments, a mayor's office, council, finance, clerk, community development, and roll that up into general fund, but we must present it to you by those department and by fund. So, we'll present the appropriation for the current year, estimate for the coming year, and also, we must provide the salary range for each office and position or function, so that, and they also, they made a qualification to this. So, instead of individual, we can also roll it up into the total salary, so that you see the total salary by department, but on the condition that if I provide a schedule of those positions. Chief administrative officer or under his or our direction shall prepare the preliminary budget in detail, making any revisions or addition to the report of department heads at least 60 days before the beginning of the new year. So, you know, under the mayor's direction, somebody like me will prepare the preliminary budget based on what the individual department director has submitted, where in which case the mayor can look at what those directors has presented, modify them, adjust them as he see fit, before we present it to the council. So, after the chief administrative officer has revised the budget, must be filed with the clerk as a recommendation of chief administrative officer for the final budget. So, when the clerk gets it, the clerk will make it available to the public not less than six weeks before the beginning of the new fiscal year, so by November 15, so that we file it with the clerk and the clerk can make it available to the citizens or let the citizens know that it is available. Chief administrative officer shall submit preliminary budget to the city legislative body at least 60 days, as I said before, by November 1st. The budget book will contain the following: explanation of the budget document, outline of the recommended fiscal policies, statement of the relation of the recommended appropriation to such policies, a statement of reason for changes from previous year in appropriation and the revenue items. So, to some degree, the reason why I, we're talking about zero-based budgeting, at times zero-based budgeting, say, well, never mind what has happened in the past, start from the scratch, but if you follow some of these guidelines, you are constantly looking back. I'm supposed to present to you the actual of 2017, the budget of 2018, and the proposal for 2019. So, if you're not looking back, what do you need those two for? So, it's intended for you to be able to see what exactly did we do last year, what are we planning on doing this year, to be able to determine where you're going. Unlike many other states, where they do not spell out the form of the budget process, what you need to do, you know, there's so many things that you can do, but in the state of Washington, the way the form that I will give you, what should be in there, is prescribed by the law right here. An explanation of any recommended major changes in the financial policy. So, if there's a major changes in financial policy, I'm supposed to explain that in the book as well. The clerk shall publish a notice once each week for two consecutive weeks, stating that the preliminary budget is available. So, that is just to let the citizens know. If you want a copy, the budget is now. Remember, some of these things were written several years ago. Most of us don't actually give out the budget copy anymore, we just make them available online because of the new technology and people are able to download and all of that, but when this was written, we were supposed to publish and make the copy available. By having it online, some of us have interpreted that as being available to the public. As part of what the clerk will publicize is designating the date, that is, the date that you will be having hearing, time and place, the time and the place that you'll be having the hearing of the legislative budget meetings, and that any taxpayer may appear and be heard for or against any part of the budget. So, when you're doing the budget hearing, I think any of the citizen can appear to speak, you know, ask to for or against any part of the budget. Publication of the notice shall be made in the official newspaper of the city. So, whatever the newspaper, in the common circulation for the city, which in our case is the mirror, is supposed to be publicized in there. Legislation will meet on or before 1st Monday of the month next preceding the beginning of the new fiscal year. So, in this case, since the fiscal year starts in January, it's supposed to be the 1st Monday in December. Since our council do not meet on Monday, so that puts it to the last Monday before, you know, the last meeting before December. So, in this case, for 2019 budget, it would be November 20, because that would be the last meeting. If the council were to say, well, okay, we want extra days, it can be up to the 1st Monday The council shall meet on the day fixed by the RCW 35-33-060 for the purpose of fixing the final budget of the city at the time and place designated in the notice thereof. Any taxpayer may appear and be heard for or against any part of the budget. The hearing may be continued from day to day, but not later than the 25th day prior to the commencement of the city's fiscal year. So, the 25th day will be around December 5th, and again, in our case, will be December 4th, because that is Tuesday. That is our first meeting before we get over the 25th day. Also, part of that day, even though that is the last day, what actually affect our day is what the King County does, because also, the King County needs our budget and level certification for their meeting as well. So, at times, this day often change, but guided by what the King County, as long as it does not go beyond, it can be done before, it just cannot go beyond. Following the conclusion of the hearing and prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, the legislative body shall make such adjustments and changes as it deems necessary or proper, and after determining the allowance in each item, department, classification, and fund, and shall by ordinance adopt the budget in its form and content. So, this is the portion where the legislative, because the mayor review what the department director submits, modify it as see fit, and when the mayor budget presentation, when you go over that, then you are also able to approve it by ordinance, and you have the power to make some adjustment and make some changes as you deem necessary and proper. After going through, having the hearing, having publications, and having, yeah, publicizing in the mirror and all of that, also, the law allow us to actually skip that process. So, RCW 35A-33-080, emergency expenditures, non-debatable. That is the condition, the city council upon the adoption of an ordinance may make the expenditure thereof without notice or hearing. So, in some instances, that means you don't have to have hearing, you don't have to do notice for certain appropriation. This emergency, in case of maybe some, that puts life of the citizens at risk or road that needs to be fixed quickly, so under those condition, you can have an emergency appropriation without giving notice, without having a hearing. Any other than that, you have to have a hearing to adopt a budget. The next one is emergency expenditure, other hearing. So, to some degree, now, there are three. The regular one, the one that I just went through, where you have to, you know, give so many notice and advertise in the paper and all of that, then the non-debatable, and this other hearing. This other hearing also is considered emergency. Such ordinance should not be voted on until five days after lapse, and taxpayer may appear at the meeting and be heard. So, this one, they're saying, well, you table the resolution and/or the ordinance, but will not go into effect until five days' lapse, and if allowed the citizens, you know. So, even though this is also an emergency, but the emergency in this case is not as, you know, life-threatening as the one in 35A-33-080. In summary, just to recap what we've gone through, department heads make their request. Under the direction of the mayor, the finance officer prepare the initial budget proposal based on department's request. It is the mayor's responsibility, but can be delegated. Mayor refuse the request and make his budget recommendation to the council. So, when we compile the department director's request, the mayor refuse it and make some changes as see fit, then makes his recommendation to the council. Then, the council reviews, conducts hearing, and make changes as well. Then, council approves the budget by the ordinance, and like I just mentioned, based on the RCW, some budget does not require notice and hearing, and those are the emergency part of it. That is pretty much the summary of this RCW, and I'll be glad to answer any question or clarify anything.
Counsel, any questions about roles, responsibilities, laws? Okay, let's move into the next. Oh, sorry. Counselor Reverend Sebadoz.
Sorry. Thank you. So, with the emergency expenditures, five days, you need to have five days' lapse, correct?
Actually, the real emergency, there's no notice, and if, I'll give you more details on what actually they're speaking to in that area. If you go to, that is under 6 of 12, they are referring to emergency caused by violence of nature, casualty, riot, interruption, war, or other unanticipated occurrence requiring the immediate preservation of order or public health, or for the restoration to a condition of usefulness of any public property which has been damaged or destroyed. That one does not require any hearing. The one that require five days, that is any emergency that does not qualify for those that I just read.
So, five days means it could be like if we were at a council meeting.
That means you read it like today, and five days from now, which probably will now be Monday next week, then you can pass it on Monday.
So, we can have a special meeting?
As long as it's announced, in this case, the notice and hearing has to be made, yes.
And it also says you need to have majority plus one, so which means four, five people agreeing to pass it, correct?
Yeah, I think in your case, because the council is seven, there will be four.
Four plus one. Right? Four plus one. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and the next.
This revenue option, I think, just for the public, for the benefit of the citizens and the people that are watching from home, so some of the PowerPoint, I'll go over them quickly, because I made the presentation to you on it already, and I just want to make sure that the citizens watching from home or here do not think, oh, okay, or even some of our own employees too, think that, oh, okay, now you're raising additional more revenue, now we can do more things. The essence of this revenue is to be able to afford 2019. It's not additional more revenue so that we can do more, so that if we want to do, just as we are doing in 2018, with some of the cost increase, we need this revenue, and I want to make sure that that is clear to the citizens and to our employees too that may be watching, that, you know, so that when they see that you levy or you get additional revenue, they don't think, oh, good, now that we have more money, we can do more of this or we can do more of that. So, part of this is part of what I shared with you on May 1st of this year. Part of the challenge is that I foresee before us in 2019 and 2020 is our health insurance premium going up. You know, in talking to our broker, there's a chance of about 15%. Retirement rate contribution, that will also change. The 2018 budget that you approved, because in that 2018, we borrow, you know, we're using some of the fund balance to balance the 2018, that will have to be repaid. I think some things that were approved in there will have implication. Five additional police officers, I think, yes, we will get grant for the next three years, but after that, the entire cost become ours. Teamster and guild union contract, those are some of the things that I foresee. Score, that is also an issue that is there. So, as I said, for the health insurance, we're looking at about 15% increase. That is a monthly payment from general fund of about 240,000, 240,700. So, total annual payment of So total annual payment of 2.9 million, and 15% of that is about 433,000. So in general fund alone, the potential cost in 2019 for health insurance is about 433,000. Also, the retirement rate is going up, it's going from 12.7% to 12.87% again. That will see about $12,000 increase annually for that. Left, in order to actually, that is decreasing, you know, from 5.43 to 5.25, so I foresee a savings or a decrease of about 17,000 from that. As I mentioned earlier, we use about 300,000 out of our fund balance to balance 2018, it will have to be repaid, and the possibility of a shortage again. So what that means is if we get into 2019, and we're not able to cover that, then we borrow some more. But of course, Mayor Farrell has clearly stated that under no condition will he borrow or use the fund balance again to balance 2019. Replacement contribution of five new police cars, part of what you approved in the budget amendment is five new cars, you know, to increase our fleet, then we need to start contributing for the replacement of those cars. So those are part of what will increase our cost. City is responsible for about 40% of the salary of the five new police officers. So that is about $200,000 annually. So in 2018, remember, we only did six months, so that means next year, we'll have to pay the full amount. And after three years, we will be paying the full amount. So these are some of the things that I see, that I'm trying to warn you that, you know, we need to find sustainable revenue source because of some of these things coming down. Equipment replacement, uh, equipment and operation costs like gas, et cetera, for those costs. I think I was talking to, uh, our economic development director today, and he was sharing with me some of the, the forecast about recession and all of that. Part of what we need to factor into this also is, if our revenue stream that we project for 2018, because of the economy, if those were affected again, so that puts us much tighter. And again, I've shared with you in the past that the, the economy is now going to be, sales tax is now going to be what it used to be, because everybody is going to the online shopping. So it's now going to be based on the stores that are located here. So the way our revenue comes will be affected. What is happening in Seattle with the head tax will also affect the city, because there's a portion of our sales tax revenue that is dedicated to the law and justice, and that is collected countywide and distributed among the city. It does not, it's not based on the sales within your city, it's based on the sales throughout the county. So if the sales goes down in Seattle, there will be some degree of impact on federal way also. So some of these things are interconnected. For the teamster, we have a contract now through 2019 that will increase our employees by 2%, so that is additional cost. And the guild, we just started the negotiation, so that, uh, I don't know what that would look like, and depending on what that, that, that will also have an impact on our total bottom line. So again, as I mentioned on May 1st, based on what we know now, our spending and budget requirement will increase next year. We may have to use up to a million in our fund balance per year beginning with 2019, 2020 budget. The city needs to prepare for this. The mayor will now propose an unbalanced budget, no, will he propose the use of the fund balance? So the main reason for revenue option discussion is to stay afloat in 2019 and beyond. So again, just to, I, I started with this, just to make the people watching from home and the people here, or even our employees, it's not just additional revenue, it's just for us to be able to cover the 2019 and 2020.
And I'd like to interject here real quickly. Uh, there is a piece of information I need to, uh, let the council, I've told several, I've told the deputy mayor and several council members, but I want to make sure that we make it clear for the public record. Our current yearly budget with SCORE is about $6.3 million. Right now, based on our ADP, average daily population at the SCORE Regional Jail, we are, according to the way the formula is currently used, we are anticipating about 490, about 490,000, $498,000 savings from SCORE in next year's budget. That's a half a million dollars. That, that is what, if you can go back to the last slide, um, so instead of going into a million, the, the last one. No, no, forward now, forward. Under the summary, right there. So it says that right now, this is, this is not taken into consideration, a million dollars in the fund balance. So really, what, what we've been engaging in even just now, before we began the meetings with, with, before I begin with the day, the meetings with each department director to try this zero, to approach the zero sum approach, zero base budget approach, right now, we're anticipating $500,000 savings from SCORE. There is a proposal before SCORE to, and I actually have a meeting at the SCORE Administrative Board tomorrow, where the budget will be up, and then next month, they're going to be considering the changing of the formula, which would average it out, which would be a significant loss for us, which I will oppose. Right now, the way the budget is, the way the formula is calculated, again, we would, we would be to the better of $500,000. Additionally, one of the reasons why we made the move with Center Stage when we did it was again to add $100,000 to our coffers. This number does not reflect those two items. So what I've been working on right now is essentially the SCORE number and the Center Stage number coming together, total of $600,000. So really, the delta that, that we're, that I'm focused on right now is $400,000. I wanted to give you the benefit of that information and make sure that since we're having that, um, this budget meeting. Still, $400,000 is a, is a great deal of money. Now, we're going to go through some, um, some options. Before we start going through the revenue options, I'm going to, I am going to make clear what I, what I'm not going to be recommending to the council, because I want to make sure that, we just have to be very careful in regard to the messaging that we send out. So I'll, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to a day. But I wanted to let you know that it's not as dire as it appears in regard to, at least at this stage, with regard to a million dollars, we're talking more like $400,000 based on those two very significant factors. A day?
Again, as part of, uh, I think I attended, uh, the, uh, SCORE meeting with my colleagues, and when I share with them that the amount that we pay is a burden, and some of them was, well, well, it's for everyone. So when I got back into the office, I actually sent, you know, something that showed the, our property tax rate to all of them, and the comment that I got back was, whoa, whoa, now I see you. Looking at the 2016, and citizens will say, well, Auburn doesn't have this, Auburn doesn't charge this, and all of that, and that may be true. But if you see federal way, the rate, 119, Kent, 151, Auburn, $2.05, Renton, 2.71, Seattle, 2.77, C-TAC, 3. The reason why I use this whole number is because that is what I have shared with you And if you look at our property tax rate among our colleagues, not only do we have the lowest rate, we also have the lowest property tax revenue. That is also part of our issue. Here's a good one. The city of Federal Way, our total assessed value is 8.9 billion, and out of that 8.9 billion, we're able to generate 10.5 million dollars in property tax. If you go to the fourth line, Auburn, their valuation was 7.9 or, or 8 billion, 7.9, which is lower than the city of Federal Way, and you look to the right, their property tax revenue was 16.2 million. That is about $6 million more than Federal Way. So if they get $6 million more, why should they do TBD? Why should they do any of this?
And I, again, just to, just to interject real quick, especially for the media that's here, it's, when Initiative 747 was locked in, this is where we were, that was where we were locked in, and it's just important that when we're talking about a structural imbalance, this is what we're talking about, this is what we're, this is what we're dealing with, and this is why other jurisdictions were able to lure some of our employees away. A day?
You know, so again, look at C-TAC, 4.9 billion, and look at their property tax revenue. That is insane. That is almost 15 million. They have almost about half of our assessed value, and they have more than, almost about 50% more in property tax revenue. Again, why should they levy utility tax? Why should they do all of these things when they have this revenue? And those are the things that we don't have, that is prompting us to do the things that we do. The same thing, look at Renton, 13.8 billion, and they're bringing home 37 million in Part of the revenue options that we need to look at, and I think Transportation Benefit District, I think I've shared this with you in 2000, I shared this with you in 2016, B and O taxes, business registration, storage facility registration, soda tax, utility tax, permit fees, admission tax, lead lift, multifamily code, marijuana tax. Now go through each one of these.
And before I do, I just want to make sure it's abundantly clear, we're not recommending any of these right now. These are just all the possibility, all the possible options.
Yes. So I'm just throwing these in the bucket for you, they are not recommendation, actually, some of them we've done. So I'm just throwing all of this into the bucket. Transportation Benefit District, you know, as I shared with you in 2016, you know, as of that time, the currently registered vehicles, 62,000, and city may charge up to $20 a vehicle. It takes six months for this to take place, and the state charges 1% admin fees. The city may raise up to 1.25 million on this. Majority vote of the council is required, and combined with other district cannot exceed These are the cities that are doing TBD. So five got in there too. So the same thing that the link will affect, five will affect Federal Way, it will also affect five as well. Business and occupation, business and occupation tax, usually based on revenue, requires additional tax, because we, it's just like filing your tax return with IRS. So implementing this, again, will require additional spending as well. These are some of the entities that do both the business registration and also do B and These are some of the rates that are being used by Burien, Des Moines, Kent, Renton, C-TAC. C-TAC is just doing business registration, and Auburn as well is just doing business registration. But like I mentioned earlier, with the kind of property tax that C-TAC and Auburn are getting, why do they need TBD? Business registration, we took care of that. Storage facility registration, that will be coming to you next week. I think, uh, based on the feedback that I got, you know, from you, and the way we have that structure, we will be able to generate about 360 on this. If we were to, yes, it is coming to the council on Tuesday, if this were to pass, you will not see this money until 20, detail end of 2019, because our business registration is usually done before December. So if we were to pass this now, so it will affect people that will be renewing for 2019. So doing this now, because we learned a little bit when we did the business, uh, business registration, because the businesses took advantage, we passed our ordinance in December, and you gave a grace period, so everybody rushed and did their renew. So we didn't really see much of the revenue in the year that you passed it. If we pass this early enough, before December, there's a good chance we will see most of Soda tax, again, as mayor said, I'm just dumping, I just, we just dumped this in the bucket, so it's not that we're recommending or asking you, you know, but I need guidance from you. Seattle just filed a 1.75 cents an ounce tax on sugary beverages. That is something to explore. I don't know exactly how much we will be able to do. If that is something that you want to do, we will need some guidance to gather more Utility tax, that is done, but may not see a nickel out of these for the next two to three years. So I think the council has already done that, and we may not, probably won't see anything between two and three years. Well, we revised the permit fees last year, and we usually take a look at it annually, and we will do that again this year. Admission tax, again, that is one thing that you've taken care of, and we also revised it this year, and, uh, some of the council member have asked me, what about the Aquatic Center? Based on our current guidelines, a sport event is exempted from admission tax, so we can't tax them. Lead lift, you know, I think, you know, we may be able to bring ourselves up to par with some of those cities, but again, this is something that will not be done if you decide to pursue this. It's something that cannot be done overnight, it's something that will have to work with the citizens and do over a period of time. So it may take a few years to actually realize this, but that may bring us up to par with Auburn, with C-TAC in terms of, in terms of the property tax rate that we, we need. Multifamily code, I think, again, just throwing all of this out. Multifamily code, I think, again, just throwing all of this out. For an example, the call to some of the big facilities by the police, I think some cities often require big facility like this to have their own security, or to have security camera that will not take away your patrol officers that are supposed to be overseeing the entire city and spending more time on one area. That is something, it's not a revenue generation, but it could be a cost reduction. Project hiring certain employees to reduce pressure on the city staff, to some degree like we're doing with Link, with, uh, uh, Sound Transit, where they are willing to pay for an employee that will walk on their permit as they start their construction. So the school district may be doing something, maybe building big facility or all of that. So it can be something that, and the catch with something like this is, when that project is done, so is the position because it's entirely funded by that project. So as I mentioned, project installing certain equipment like a security camera, again, so instead of having to take so many hours or so many of our offices responding, if they have security, you know, on campus or have camera, that may put less pressure on the rest of the city. Marijuana tax, I think this was discussed a couple of years ago, so, but again, we just threw all of these into the bucket.
Yeah.
And it's not because we are recommending one or the other.
Councilmember DuKlo.
I just want to clarify, it says it's disallowed to sale. We put a moratorium on it, didn't we?
That's right.
So, a temporary moratorium, we can take that off anytime. We haven't disallowed the sale, we just put a moratorium on anything happening. Actually, then that was about the same time that liquor was beginning to be sold in, in the grocery stores.
So Mayor, can I clarify that?
Right.
The moratorium's lapsed, it's actually been codified as a not allowed to use in our code.
Okay, that's been codified?
Yes, but we can change that.
Yes, you can change it.
What was the, what were the numbers in regard to the public vote? Do you recall?
I don't recall. I do remember it was over 50%. It was, it was not, it was 56 or 57, but I could, I could investigate that.
Do that, please. If you could provide that to council. We asked, we obviously asked the public for that.
I can probably find out right here.
For that direction, and if we're going to reverse that, we may want to, if we were to reverse that, we may want to send it back out to the public to see if they've changed their mind. Kent?
So pretty much based on this, I know I've loaded you with so much information, the guidance that, you know, I'm looking for is to be able to say, okay, is there any of these that you want us to gather more information, you know, or whatever you. So other than that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Ade, for your report. This, I think it's safe to say that this kind of kicks off our budget discussions for the 1920 budget year. So I know that you've, that the public has seen, and I know it's out in the public, of the dates of all the budget meetings.
Correct.
And I know that we have all the stuff available on the internet.
Correct.
What, you know, and I'm kind of, this question is really aimed at looking at the 50-foot level here as a whole. So what, is there any plan to get the public engaged with their budget besides these type of meetings?
Uh, the plan is, when we had the mayor propose the budget, we will have this on the web, whatever it is that the mayor wants to do. But as of now, I think it's to put it on the web and make, have a few copies available and be able to, you know, have so many presentations to the council where we'll be able to engage them.
So as I've made clear repeatedly, what we're going to be doing, what I'm going to be doing is providing, since the State of the City address was made at the Performing Arts and Events Center, I've been invited to attend the preview of the budget of the, not the preview, but the review of the budget and its presentation at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon. And then I'll probably go out and do the Neighborhood Connection type meetings out to the public and probably go to, you know, around the community, talking about the proposed budget. But that's, that's what the public outreach. Deputy Mayor, turn it on. Councilmember Moore, Copeng.
Ade, I know that you put together quite a long list of different revenue generating options. I wanted to thank you for not putting the head tax on there. We don't need that. And I think the soda tax was a reach too, maybe the BNO as well, but definitely I think that there are some things for us to work on here. The permit fee, I think that it's important for us, if we're permitting, that we're actually covering the costs.
Yes.
Of the actual process that goes into generating the permits. And I think that there's been some discussion, that I've heard anyway, that we may not always be doing that. So I think reviewing those permitting fees, I think is going to be a very important component, I think, in continuing to look at revenue. So thank you.
All right, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much. And to respond to my earlier question, I appreciate the mayor, I'm hoping he's thinking of Budget Town Hall are the keywords I'm looking for, that I'm sure will be similar in terms of formatting to the Neighborhood Connections, but I'm hoping to see that, and it sounds like I will, and I think it's a great, great thing to take your budget out to the public and have a conversation with people about it. I think that's really important, and to relate it to them, I think that's also important. So on to another type of question I have.
I would note, before you move on to the, I think a $400,000 shortfall is a much different conversation than a $1 million shortfall. And I think that is important to, to make sure that we're, that we're all on the same page. And if we can, you know, we're going to hold firm on this formula with SCORE and really hold our ground there, but that's $500,000, that's about half of the current shortfall right there. And I would note that, that in the past two years, SCORE has been a major impediment to our fiscal, fiscal planning. Last year or this year, it was $677,000 that we got debt in regard to an unanticipated, simply just trying to keep individuals incarcerated that need to be there. And the other, the year before, it was a million dollars a year. And so we're really taking a very hard look at SCORE because, as we need to. Unfortunately, the dynamic that is going on right now is that it's a race to the bottom for ADP, which means that, and what I mean by that is, is that cities are being, you know, we joined this, this cohort of cities, we joined this group in order to make sure that we had some control over costs and that kind of thing. And now, based on the formula and based on this cinder block that is, that is essentially tied to our leg as we're trying to swim through these, through these waters, we're, now it's a race to the bottom in regard to ADP, which means that we're having to house fewer and fewer people to make sure that we don't get stung for half a million dollars or a million dollars a year. That is, that is absolutely unacceptable, and that's what we're facing.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, yeah, and I think all the more reason why that's important for you to have that atmosphere and environment at this Budget Town Hall, to share that, because I think people need to know that of what you're talking about, because I think that's really valuable information.
We're planning on, we're planning.
Which is great. And certainly, I do appreciate the conversation on SCORE because that is something I'm going to be looking into quite a bit, and I'm glad to hear about the savings that we're now on our way to getting, because I know for years I've been hearing that it's supposed to save us money, but yet the numbers don't show that. And so, but Ade, my question was, so this is a two-year budget, 19 and 20.
Yes.
Remind me, and maybe this is a question for somebody, when do the construction start for Sound Transit? And then there's a follow-up question to that. What year does construction start with Sound Transit?
Let EJ.
For the Federal Way Link extension, they're starting property acquisition now. They're going through the bidding process and, starting in 2019. It'll depend, the exact start date will depend on the contractor that's selected, and their schedule, basically whether they start up in C-TAC and build south, or they start here and build north. But construction on the project will be the end of 2019. That doesn't necessarily mean it will be in Federal Way city limits though, but somewhere between here and C-TAC. Their, the construction will be occurring in here by the end of 2020.
Okay. And I appreciate knowing that information, EJ. Where I was going with that question, Ade, is that are we building the budget as you are building the budget? Are you building that with the mind of potential business loss because of constructions, of movements and?
Yes, actually, I think probably about a year ago, I did either send a report to all of the council showing, even though, yes, over a period of time, we'll probably will be fine, but when these businesses or the property are acquired by Sound Transit, that means they get off tax roll. That means less property tax. The buildings that are being used for retail, that means if those businesses move out of the Federal Way, that means less, you know, sales tax. Also, because those properties are now being occupied, that means less utility tax for the use of gas and electricity because they have been demolished. Yes, when the construction start, because we will have sales tax revenue on the materials and the construction, we will see a lift in the sales tax revenue. But between the time that they acquire the property and the time they get into the full construction, there will be a dip in both property tax, sales tax, and utility tax. And yes, we will factor that in, into the budget for 2019.
Can I do a quick follow-up? Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. So it sounds like it's going to be, that's going to be impacting the 1920 and then 21 and 22 budgets?
Yes.
And probably moving on from there?
Yes, yes.
All right, Councilmember Sephardosson, then Councilmember DuKlo.
Back to SCORE. So is it certain that we're going to reduce our expenses, or is that going to be voted on?
Well, the budget gets voted on, it's on the agenda for tomorrow, and then I think they're going to be looking at, they want to pass the agenda, the budget first, without talking about the calculation and talking about this ratio. I'm not going to be approving any budget until we can lock in and keep this, this ratio the same. Now, $500,000 in our budget is a big deal, and especially in light of the $1.6 million in the past two years that has been in exceeding of our budget. So it, that's why I'm bringing legal counsel and Ade to the SCORE meeting tomorrow. So this is.
So they'll be voting on it tomorrow?
On the budget.
On the budget, yeah.
But the formula, they're not, they're not actually going to get into the formula till next, till next month, and that's unacceptable. If we're going to vote on a budget, we need to have that formula.
Right.
I'm not going to walk away from a half a million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
And so that's, I think, I think you're, I'm kind of practicing for tomorrow. Danny?
I just want to say, SCORE has been a problem ever since it started. It was supposed to be saving us money. We used to, we used to drive prisoners over to Yakima, I believe.
Yeah.
And then pick them up when their time was over, and they figured that when the cities came together, it was supposed to save us money and time and staff hours, and it hasn't worked out that way at all, which is unfortunate.
Yeah, and now our partner, our partner cities are reducing, actually, the city of Auburn eliminated their municipal court, eliminated. And now they contract with King County, and now their daily population is in the 30s, and they keep dropping, 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 which means our proportional share goes up. And so here we are trying to make sure that we have a safe city, and our, and our partner cities, their ADP keeps dropping and dropping. And if we want to keep our city safe, we're actually.
And isn't there a minimum that the original people have to, have to pay?
It's all based on this, according to the ILA, the Inter Local Agreement, when we all came together, there is a, a ratio.
Yeah.
Well, now that the City of Federal Way is ahead by $500,000 this year, low and behold, our partners want to change the formula.
Yeah.
And well, let's just say I'm going to, I'm going to get a little unreasonable. So we need to, we need to hold on to this 500, because we got stung two years in a row.
Yes. The other issue is Sound Transit.
Yeah.
They are going to be relocating businesses. There's no guarantee they are going to relocate them in the City of Federal Way. Isn't there some way we can get them to mitigate the damages to the city?
I know that question's been asked a lot. No, the short answer is, their, their argument is that in the long run, this is going to benefit the city, so this is part of the campaigns of building the place out. I can look into it more thoroughly, but the bottom line is that they are another sovereign entity that's been authorized by the state to do this.
I understand they're a sovereign entity, but they're coming into another sovereign entity and taking away our resources, our income resources.
Well, as I, you know, as I've made clear, you know, I am actually on the Tacoma Dome Link Extension, the co-chair of that Tacoma Dome Link Extension routing, and I think you're thinking, or I think you're primarily thinking of what happens south of our downtown.
Well, I'm thinking about both.
Yeah.
You know, I know they say that they're going to go up behind, and they're not going to take out like the car dealers, excuse, the car dealership and all of that.
Yeah.
They're going to build up there between I-5 and that, but there's still going to be something there that's going to, might take out some of that. We're going to lose money. That's my problem, and we don't have any space to lose money.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Trent.
Thank you. First of all, I want to apologize for being late today. Ade, thank you for your presentation. I know this is a lot of work for you, but I do have a couple of questions. One of them is, I haven't seen options to reduce our expenditure. By that I mean, why don't we look at technology, invest in technology so that we can reduce human capital? For example, let's say, I don't know how long it takes one person to cut the grass, right? So instead of the push lawnmower, if we buy the rye, what's that called, rye on or something? If we can invest in that, will that reduce the number of FTEs that we need to maintain the park? So that's just one example. The other, the other example is, what about paperless system? What about electronic file so that we don't have to spend so much money buying papers and then staff have to file those papers? That's another option. How do we know we operate in the most effective and efficient if we don't have anything to look at it? You know what I mean? Some kind of self-audit? What about the lean management? So those kind of things, in my opinion, we need to look at to make sure that we are operating in the most effective and efficient before we, you know, even look at revenue options. You know what I mean?
Yep. I think if the city wants to do a performance audit, that is fine, but just by my own recent experience, I just lost one of our key staff to take on, actually, go to the City of Auburn for a little bit more pay with less work. So what we do here is, and that is not just for the finance department, I think you've heard some of my colleagues, where people are doing, yes, they're glad, they're happy they have a job, but you can only do that for so long. Like I said, here's somebody that is very loyal and very dedicated, but choosing less work, similar pay, close to the house, while he jumped ship. And that is similar to what some of the departments are facing. I think we can do performance audit. I think we can do performance audit. We can, I think that is part of why the mayor is asking the directors to justify every expense. And I think part of what they'll probably will come up with, okay, fine, maybe, you know, if I get this equipment, we already see a little bit of that in CD, actually. So, well, I may not necessarily need additional staff if we have this software. So some of that conversation is happening, but I want to just put that out there to the council. Be careful. We're already putting so much on this staff. And take for me, I mean, now that this employee is gone, I've been burning midnight oil. I don't know for how long I can keep that up. So, and you have several employees in that boat, too. So you can only squeeze so much out of the stone, you know? So I totally agree that, you know, we need to have some efficiency study and all of that, but again, based on what is happening, and our employees are talking. The analysis that we just put together, I think, has now factored in pay increase for the non-rep. So we're going to have these employees say, okay, well, actually, just, just take it in the chin, you know? There's not gonna be a pay increase, just do more. You know, so we need to be, you know, I'm not saying we can't do that, I'm just saying we need to keep that in mind.
Okay. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. To Councilmember Juan, Tran, that's a great question, and certainly I would entertain a discussion on that, but clearly there has to be that balance and that sensitivity to the amazing staff that, that the mayor oversees and our directors oversee, but at the same time, at the end of the day, you know, we have a job to do and that's...
Absolutely.
How do we, how do we become more efficient and effective with the public's money? And I think that's really important. So we have to find that medium of empowering the employees and showing our appreciation to them, but also do our job. That being said, Mr. Mayor, historically, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't there a, it's my understanding that there was a, an effort to do a performance audit, but it just never got to the final stage? Is that right?
I don't have any recollection of that. There was, in the last, in the last time we did the budget, over, I think about $300,000 to adjust salaries. And based on the revenue package, we had to take that out. And I think that's, that's something we're gonna look at. Councilmember Duglo?
I'm gonna go back to what I said another meeting or so ago. We have a revenue problem. We need to look at attracting new businesses or whatever we can do to bring BNO and other taxes in here. You know, we've got the, we've got a lawsuit now going, going on, a potential lawsuit, which is gonna cost us money, one way or the other. We have to defend against it. If we win, that's fine. We're taxing people and it's, it's not a very popular tax, but we need to have that money. We really, really need to look at revenue generation. That means bringing in more businesses. So we need to open up our, our blinders here as to what's out there and what can bring in some money in the next couple of years for us that's gonna balance this off.
Exactly. Thank you. Oh, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Sephardosan, and then back to Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a follow-up today, I think the public's probably heard the zero-based budget approach kinda thrown out. Can you describe the interplay between that and our current budget process and exactly what that means?
Say that again, please.
Just the, describe the, the interplay between our current kinda budget process, what typically happens, and then the zero-based approach? I think just so we're kinda clear.
In terms of the process, I think, I think like I just described, you have the, the director make their presentation or put their reports together based on their needs. And as Mayor pointed out, it's not going to use any fund balance. Then he reviews that and makes sure that there's adequate revenue to fund the request. And when there's not adequate revenue, he goes through and says, no, you can't have this, no, you can't have that, no, you can't have that, until we come to a point where the revenue and the expenditures are about the same. So I think to a great extent, those are some of the things that probably are done away from the eye of the public that maybe even the council may not really see. But annually, the directors put forward, these are my needs, these are the salary that our people need, and we say, no, based on this revenue, you can't have this. So evidently, maybe with this process, part of what maybe we may end up having, so that you see what the director requests are and what the mayor's proposal is. So you see that the mayor has gone through screening and say, no, you know, I can't fund this, no, I can't fund that, no, I can't fund that, because there's so much tapes left in the room. There's so much that are cut off, you know? So when the budget comes to you and you just see a balanced budget, there's so much work that often goes into that before it gets to you. And that is part of what the mayor's supposed to do. It comes up with the recommendation after reviewing the director's request, you know? So that is part of the process that we will go through and make sure the revenue and the expenses match. And like the mayor said, it's now going to tap into the reserve to absorb because that is, you know, just never-ending potential problem. So that is a process we are hoping to, to follow.
And so just that deliberation process to, you know, like, one position may be more favorable in comparison to another position or whatever in the budget, that's not done in public?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Sephardosan?
Thank you. I think one of, one tax generating thing that we have not talked about, maybe Airbnb, that is not listed here at all.
Yes. Just so, I think that is a good one, but you have to understand how difficult that will be to implement. Because, yes, I think if we get a direction from the council, we'll pursue that, because these are people that are not registered, there's no way to be able to go after them unless the neighbors are reporting them. So you may actually need additional staff to be able to do this policing. And that is why it has really been very slow to gain ground. But again, it's something that if the council wants to invest in that, that we can look into.
I think there's an app even that you can use to get it, so I believe there's a way where there's a collective place?
Well, what we're gonna do is, actually, I see Tim responding in the back, and I'll have Tim provide some information to council, and we'll work with, with Aday, and we'll follow up on that.
Exploring it might not be a bad idea.
Yeah.
For or against?
That's right.
And I'm not, I'm not saying one way or the other, but it's something to consider.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, we've actually got some public comment. Thank you, Aday. And let's go ahead and get the public comment, and then we're gonna go, come back to council discussions and questions. So I've got four pink sheets. I've got Graham Evans is up first, then Bob Aldright, Bruce Judson, Judson, and Jeff Aldright. All right. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, city councilmembers. Thank you very much. I've got lots of questions and comments to make on this, and I'll pass you those later this week. Let me just raise four points tonight. Zero-based budgeting ought to provide us with, first of all, some tightly examined options for providing services more efficiently and effectively, as Councilmember Tran has pointed out. I'm not seeing that. Second, it should provide us with a prioritized list of expenditure options. Again, I'm not seeing that, and that would be extremely helpful. With a good prioritized list, you can actually see where you need to cut off expenditure if you wanna meet a particular revenue stream. And we're not seeing that. That would be helpful. Second area, I've lived in Federal Way 19 years now. Property values have gone up considerably in that time. The city population has risen by some 35%. We should be seeing enhanced revenue from that, and we should be realizing in a city of this size, economies of scale. Instead, we're asked to produce more revenue. Something is wrong somewhere, and I'm not hearing the explanation of that. I'd like to hear that. Third point, we've not heard discussed tonight, the Performing Arts Center. I'd like to see whether we can do a comparison between the performance of the Performing Arts Center in terms of revenue compared to what the Blue Ribbon Commission put forward, what assumptions were made in that, and whether we're actually living out to that. It concerns me greatly. We don't seem to have somebody leading now the Performing Arts Center in developing its business growth, and that must be a revenue gap. We've not heard that mentioned at all tonight. And fourthly, sensitivity analysis. We've heard some items of things we could be concerned about. We've heard the opportunity about the jail, the SCORE jail. It concerns me, though, that we are looking at a deficit between two very large numbers. And I've not heard of a sensitivity analysis on the revenue side or on, on the expenditure side, which will give us confidence that the delta we're looking at in between is actually something we, we know how to control. Half a million, Mr. Mayor, I'm afraid, on a million looks a lot at one stage, but when you look at it in terms of the two large numbers for revenue and for expenditure, it may be nothing like enough to be confident that we can actually meet a budget. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Bob Aldri, Aldright. And then Bruce Judson.
Hi, it's Bob Aldright. We've got a, had a storage facility in the city of Federal Way, and we're currently building a new one. And I can appreciate the finance director's challenges that he has. As a small business owner, we too face challenges. So we're addressing the potential for a registration for storage, which we don't quite understand how it's coming together. But currently, we pay between 20 and 25% of our net revenue out in property taxes. And they've been going up year after year, but that's part of doing business. And adding another fee, whether that's BNO tax or some other type of fee to it, does become a challenge because we have a facility that's located on the edge of the city, and most of our competition comes from Kent and Des Moines. Puts us at an unfair, what we feel, an economic disadvantage. Adding a registration for storage singles us out. We're no different than apartments, warehouses, or offices. And to just put all the burden upon us when our reliance upon the city for services, police, and fire are no different than apartment complexes? And so we just, we, we're kinda hard with that. And we're spending, you know, $10 million on a facility. We generate close to $1 million in retail sales tax. The city's portion of that's $350,000. And so we would just, we appreciate your budget challenges, but we don't wanna have it all on our backs, too. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Bruce Judson. And then after that, Jeff Aldright.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, members of the council, members of the audience. Thank you very much for this time to speak before you. I have to take them off when I'm looking long distances instead of my paper. Forgive me for my nervousness up here. I'm used to being on the other side of the dais, as I'm a retired councilman from the town of Stillcom after 16 years. Spent five years in the mayor's budget and foresight committee, and I'm very sensitive to the budget time. In fact, I was just speaking with our town administrator yesterday as he was sweating beginning the, the budget process for this year. And I was pleased as he called me and asked me about some ideas. It was a surprise. I come to you this evening as a partner in a business that is building with Mr. Aldright a new storage facility in town. We're very concerned about the city's direction that it's going with creating a new tax that targets a specific sector of the business world out there. So I come to you and ask, what expense have we created within the city of Federal Way that would cause you to want to create a new tax targeting storage? Through the process of construction of our building, which we're about ready to start, we will be paying just over $300,000 in impact fees. Impact fees to offset the expense that we have created in the city of Federal Way for building this facility. From then on, we don't see what expense we're gonna be creating that would necessitate the creation of a new tax base, a new form of revenue. And we feel that we're being picked on, that we bring in revenue and the city wants part of that to offset expenses generated elsewhere within the city operation. We, that's question number one that I have is, what are we doing to create expenses? What expenses are we creating, if any? Number two, we ask that, in my business that I work in, I am a commercial closer for realist, or for title insurance company, and I closed a lot of apartment complexes. And I see within those complexes that there is storage facilities available to tenants. Those storage facilities are paid for with separate rents, not the regular, the normal monthly rental amount. They're separate, they're separate agreements, and those facilities are paid somewhere between $100 to $150 a month by the tenants. Or will those rents be included if you do enact this new tax for storage? Please forgive me if I may have 30 seconds longer. I could go on for another half hour regarding budget issues, budget challenges, revenues, expenses. I ask for you to look at your internal processes and fix internal inefficiencies and reduce your own expenses before you start to go outside and attack the business world for additional revenues. In 2000, when I was first elected to the town of Stillcom, we were buried in debt. We were contemplating bankruptcy. In a period of 16 years that I was a councilman, I championed an effort to reduce expenses in the town of Stillcom. We reduced expenses, we defeased debt. When I left the council in 2016, we were debt-free. We were paying cash for everything. We were building new roads, and it's still that way. It can be done. It takes a lot of work, takes a lot of effort and scrutinizing expenses, getting rid of debt, but it can work, and it's beautiful when that happens. I again, thank you very much for your time. Ask that you look internally at expenses rather than attacking a sector of the business world with a discriminatory tax. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bruce. Jeff Aldright.
My name is Jeff Aldright. I want to encourage the, I want to encourage the council to reject or reconsider the self-storage registration fee. Self-storage is paying significant impact fees. These fees more than offset the low impact on municipal, municipal services such as roads and fire and police protection. My storage is spending close to $300,000 in impact fees to the city, including the purchase of a Safe City camera as requested by planning department, which we complied with. For example, a quick-service food establishment will spend a fraction of this amount, but will use far more in city services. Self-storage meets the need of Federal Way residents who struggle with availability and affordability of housing in the city and the region. Data shows that approximately half of self-storage tenants have annual incomes below $50,000. Most residents will select a self-storage facility within three miles of their home. Imposing a tax or a registration fee like this will be directly passed on to the citizens whose housing share of wallet is already too great. If Federal Way residents are required to spend more on storage via tax or targeted fee, they will have less to spend on their housing needs because we will pass this cost on. This cannot be the outcome the city is wanting. Self-storage is the rental of real property, not a service or retail use at its core. A tax on self-storage singles out storage compared to other businesses that rent real property, such as apartments, office space, and retail space. Significantly, the city is not seeking a tax on these other businesses, which all have typically a much greater impact on city services. Why is the city wanting to single out my industry? To me, it seems like the city has a duty to equality and to treat all business uses similarly. Self-storage exists in Federal Way to meet the needs of city residents. A targeted tax on self-storage rents will drive self-storage development and associate impact fees, permit fees, sales tax, as well as construction and permanent jobs to adjacent communities that do not single out self-storage. that do not single out self-storage for negative tax treatment. This will hinder future growth and future development. Again, I would, I feel the city has a responsibility and obligation to treat similar uses fairly, and I'm very concerned that the industry that puts food on my table for my family is being singled out when our use for public services is no greater, and I'd argue is less, than so many other industries in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Are there any more pink sheets? Dana, come on up.
Dana Holloway. I'd like to sort of speak to the people in the audience and the people that are watching at home. I believe all the council members and the mayor, of course, understand this, but as I've gotten smarter on budget, I'm realizing that we have the property tax, and everybody complains about property tax, and usually it's not the property tax being charged by the city. But the City of Federalway loses a lot of revenue because of property taxes, and it surprised me that if a developer gets an incentive to build affordable slash low-income housing, they can get exempt from paying their property taxes for up to 10 years. That's 10 years the city doesn't have the revenue coming in on that property that we need as a city. In addition, any entity that can also, is excluded from property taxes would be the postal office. So that means the transfer station we have down here, that Big Beach property, they don't pay property taxes. Department Transportation, the schools. So a lot of the property we have in the city is not giving revenue back. So the city's not getting the revenue, so it's, we're getting short, and the people that actually have homes or the people that rent in non-affordable housing are picking up the tab. Just like to point that out. I wish we would not allow any more low-income housing in until we start getting this budget under control. Get mean housing in here, so that people that are paying the taxes that we need. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dana. I would note, and as Aday said when we first got started, that obviously, when we, and I mentioned as well, with Initiative 747, we've been locked in to that current rate, and then the maximum you can go up every year is 1%. So, but interest rates and the value of the dollar have gone down, and that's why the gears are starting to slip, and that's why our neighbors, based on the calculation, are kind of pulling away from us, and why they're able to pull certain employees away. Would also note that this is just a prelim, the purpose of today's workshop is just to talk about revenue options. Graham and Mr. Evans, we're going to get into a very, very detailed proposal, so stay tuned. I think that what, what we've been wanting to do and just be responsive to the council is talk about revenue options, and this is obviously, you know, certainly something we're going to look at very, very carefully and closely, and really take out to the public. So you'll see a lot of detail. And then where we're going to get in, you know, once, it'll be the September 5 meeting of the Chamber of Commerce, in which I'll, I'll set out the budget. And I'll, we'll do that again at the city council meeting as well, right around that time. And then, then at that point, the televised individual meetings with each department is going to occur in excruciating detail, or let's just call it fine detail. And we're going to go through that process, you know, very, very carefully. So just want to make sure there's a lot more. This is just a preliminary workshop in regard to revenue options. And so, council, any other comments or questions? Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. Thank you, Aday, for your presentation, and thank you, council members, for coming in on a fifth Tuesday. I appreciate it. I think this is a worthwhile meeting. I have a few questions, and some I may choose to send an email to you a day later. But I've heard for, for a while now that a recession is possible. They do occur every 10 years or so. Today on the news, it was reported that rents are finally decreasing in Seattle, and that could be a sign of a recession approaching. How is the city, if a recession were to occur in the next two to three years, how do you think we would operate as a city? Are there things that we need to be doing besides what we're doing now to survive another recession?
Well, if a recession were to happen now, where we have a decrease in sales tax revenue, property tax revenue, I think we'll probably have to go through some, you know, layoff. I think some of the fund balance that we have are intended to be for temporary. When you have recession, it's not a temporary thing, and our reserve is not above the rate that you set it to. So it's not as if we have so much cushion where the fund balance is supposed to be 9,000, and we have 20,000. So we can say, well, we have 11,000 to help us for the next four years. No, we don't. So should that happen, I think we will be in great, we will be hurting.
Okay. One of the questions I know that Councilmember Duco and I asked was on a marijuana tax and what that could potentially bring to the city. Were you able to find any numbers?
I know if it's the direction of the council to do more study on how much the kind of revenue, we will be glad to do that. But as of now, to some degree, I just thought because the, the citizens, you know, you put a moratorium on it, there's no point in spending too much time. But if it's something that the council wants us to do, we'll be glad to.
Okay.
Councilmember Duco?
I think you could just call a couple of the cities where those, where they have a store, like I believe it's Kent, Auburn, and Puyallup, and talk to their, their budget people and ask how much that they're getting from them. I think you're going to find it's a substantial amount.
So is it my understanding that you want us to do more study on that?
I think just calling and getting that information from those cities would be helpful. Just call the finance director and ask them.
Councilmember Copeng?
You know, Aday, I think along that line, I think the landscape has changed quite a bit since the moratorium was placed and has since been codified. This is not a cash business anymore. It's being, it's being transacted through credit unions. The revenue package has changed. City actually would, cities are actually getting a larger portion of the revenue than they were initially. So I think just giving us more information so we understand really what the, what the landscape currently is, you know, whether we decide to change anything. I think the vote, the people are going to need to speak on that. I think that's, that's important. But I also want to just speak really briefly about the, the perception. I appreciate what Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Tran are saying about controlling costs. I think that's something that we, we are always going to have to look at. But I, I feel like we're looking for pennies when we really do have bigger issues. And adding additional revenue is very important. When we looked at the presentation that you did on the budget and your conversation really about how understaffed we were, and the staff that we had was not paid comparably to the other jurisdictions that surround us, that creates a difficult opportunity, and we are continuing to lose employees, and we are continuing to have to force our employees to work harder, to do more, or our services are suffering. And so, I mean, we can continue to have our services suffer, and what we, when we talk about, we're talking about a permit. It used to be that we were the most responsive jurisdiction in South King County when it came to permitting. That time has gone longer now, and it's not for lack of effort on the part of the staff. There's just too much going on, and there's not enough people to take care of it. So again, we are not saying this is what has to happen. We're saying if you want this to happen, though, if you want to have better services, if you want to have police, if you want to have public safety and all the things that come with that, it does cost money. And so I think it's very important that we really, we, we communicate, continue to communicate the need for additional revenue. We don't want to raise taxes. We don't want to, you know, just look for other ways, but at the same time, we have to reduce services if we don't raise revenue. So the, the public is going to speak at some point, and this, what this process is for, and I hope that the public will give us very clear feedback on what they want. If they want less in the way of police, if they want, they're okay with a less, less serve of a inferior, a less of a serve, a less responsive service model from our staff, then we can have that conversation. But I think realistically, we need to look at additional revenue to really maintain the level of service that we have now and going forward. So, thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I think we need to get a better understanding of what performance audits really mean, and I think that's one of the things that kind of comes to my mind. But, you know, the vote that we all took about with the utility vote really taught me a lot. It really taught me that the public had a lot of questions about the inside of our budget. And when that happens, for me, if we're going to talk about revenues, regardless if they're a tax increase or whatever, you know, I want to show the voters, I want to show the taxpayers what we're doing with our dollars. And I think having a performance potentially, you know, it makes sense to see a performance audit done because then we can show and be more transparent to, to, you know, the taxpayers saying, here's what's happening with your dollars. We're being more efficient and effective with your dollars. And I think that's really important for us to be able to showcase that before we even get to the whole revenue discussion, whether it means tax increase or whether it need, it means fees being raised. So I think that, that's really important. And when that's done, over a period of time, lean management and performance audits, there's a savings of a lot of dollars that goes way beyond pennies, would be, would be my thought from, based on what I understand. Now, I will say that I'm not an expert in this, but logically, it makes sense to me, and that's why I'm advocating. I would, I would probably, so I just want to put that out there. And then I'll have a closing statement later.
Mr. Mayor? Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. On the admissions talks, it's, you said that the aquatic center and sporting events are exempt?
Correct. I think according to the code, the, the sport events are exempted. So be it at the aquatic center, so on the list, we listed basketball, football, trucks, any of those sport events, whether it's done by the school or whatever, it is exempted. I'm not so sure whether the city can remove that, and I'll let the city attorney speak to that.
Right. I could look into it. It's a policy decision that the city made that certain, like fundraising events for youth or youth sport events or things that encourage healthy living should be exempt from this admissions tax. So that was the theory behind that exemption. It is a government-owned facility, so that adds another wrinkle that I have to look into. But theoretically, we could change that policy.
Okay. Thank you. The Airbnb, we've been asking in FedRAC for about 18 months to look into that, and I know we talked about it last week at FedRAC. It would be something to look into and see what, not only what, how many units we have in Federalway, because I, I've looked on the Airbnb sites, and when it says Federalway, it can be anywhere, you know, not in necessarily in the city, but in the surrounding area. So it might be hard to figure out where they are unless the neighbor complains to the city that there's a lot of cars coming and going all the time. But I'd be interested in what other cities are doing with that around the country, not just here in Washington, and seeing if other cities are, just what they're doing with the Airbnbs, because they do impact our, the city, they do impact services, and it would be interesting just to see, you know, what other cities do to, to work with those.
Absolutely. I think as Mayor mentioned, I'll coordinate with our Economic Development Director, Tim Johnson, and we'll put something together for you.
Okay. Thank you. The self-storage units, I'd like to understand more about why we're proposing a tax on that.
It's not a tax. It's a, it's a registration.
A registration fee, thank you very much. Why we're proposing a registration fee on that and not other businesses. So if you could get more information to me on that.
And there should be a presentation next Tuesday, right? Yeah, it's on, it's on the next Tuesday meeting. So at the council meeting, at the council meeting on Tuesday, let's just make sure we roll that out in regard to how we got there.
Okay. Awesome. And I would say that to really balance the budget and come up with something that is going to work long-term, we do need to reduce expenses and increase revenue. It's like losing weight. You can't lose weight by just exercising and not reduce what you take in. So, you know, it goes both ways. I think we need to look at our, our expenses. We need to see what could be reduced, what could be changed, and we do need to increase our revenue.
Yeah. Good. You know what they say about losing weight? It's simple, but it's not easy. And I think you put your, you put, you hit the nail on the head. As, anyway, that's, that's all I'll say about that.
I just thought it went.
You're absolutely right. And it's, and you know, it really is. That's, that's why I really, I'm hesitant to go, you know, I know that we needed to do this exercise to talk about possible options, but I'm really anxious to, and I'm really looking forward to rolling up my sleeves, talking with every director and the deputy director, and really digging in and seeing where we can find these savings as best we can. I did, at the beginning of the meeting, where the-
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Not just savings, increase revenue. So it goes both ways.
All right. Simple but not easy. All right. So in regard to the election results for the marijuana, for the marijuana vote, on November 3, this information provided me by legal counsel, thank you, Ryan. On November 3, 2015, advisory proposition number one for the marijuana vote, yes votes totaled 5,737 at 38.62%. The no votes to have marijuana stores in the City of Federalway totaled 9,117 for 61.38% of our neighbors that opposed it. Turnout rate was 36.2%, and there were, anyway, that's per King County election. So it was essentially 39 to 61. So I think it's important to remember, and we'll, we'll take it from there.
Could I say something?
Yes, please.
That is important to remember, and thank you, Ryan, for getting that information. But when we're looking at a marijuana store coming in right on the border, Federalway and King County, it's going to be there, King County, it's going through the permitting process, and we look at marijuana stores all around us, we're dealing with the, with the fact that people buy marijuana, they come into the city and they use it. I think it's something we seriously need to talk about. It's no longer something that a store up in Seattle has and, and doesn't impact the City of Federalway. We're going to have a marijuana store right on the border, right in King County, and we're going to be dealing with, with that. So we need to talk about-
I'd like to talk about this a little bit more. I'd like, I'd like to have the city contact the cities that have it.
Sounds like that's going to happen.
And, and find out what they're, they're getting money from there, find out what the, are they having problems? How are they doing? Remember several years ago, liquor wasn't sold in the grocery stores?
Right.
And now it is?
That was a result of a statewide initiative.
Yeah. But I mean, it happened, and everything thought the world was going to come to an end, and it hasn't. They had some problems initially, and they figured out to put things on the bottles that if you tried to go out the door, they were going to sound an alarm, and, and everything is fine. So I, let's just look at it.
Yeah, we're going to. Thank you very much. All right. Councilmember Moore?
Yes. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I have to say that I think this is interesting note, and I can't move quick enough to, to find out exactly, but I think it's multifamily, help me out here, multifamily tat, what do you want to call it? Is it possible revenue fix? I don't know what to call it.
I think I put that in there as a possible-
Code. Okay.
Cost reduction, because if you have multifamily paying for certain fees that support them, it lessens the pressure on the rest of the system. Say, for example, if they, like I said, if they were to have their own security in there, I think there are some instances where you have about, you know, and our, you know, Deputy Chief of Police can speak to this, you have four cars responding to an issue in one of these multifamily units. So if you have a security that is paid for by the facility, I think before it gets to the point where four of our officers or four cars are responding- the point where four officers or four cars are responding, they probably will be able to deal with that. I think it probably will reduce the number of calls, it probably will reduce the number of fire calls, and I think that may have an impact on the rest.
Yeah, thank you, Aday, for that. And I think I'm looking forward to one of our sessions getting a deeper look into that and what does that mean? Because, you know, I think one of the concerns I continue to have is we have, you know, you talked about a pot store coming right out, right outside the limits of Federal Way. Now, we have another multifamily unit right outside Federal Way that's clearly going to be affecting our services and will have an effect on our budget. And so, I think we need to get a deeper look into that, you know, and, you know, I don't know where King County is on this and I don't know why this stuff keeps happening because I know that people have said historically that we don't want to be dumping ground, yet we're becoming a dumping ground. But I'll stop short of that, Aday, because I think I'm off on a tangent. But I think we do need to look into the multifamily code a lot more in terms of how do we ensure that we're not going to be greatly impacted essentially, at the end of the day, with our budgets.
Council, any other comments? It's a good start of the discussion. Anything else for the good of the order? All right. Thank you for those who showed up and thank you for those who testified. And with that, we are adjourned.